Good evening, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this full council meeting. Before we start the meeting, I need to run through a few housekeeping details. I'd like to remind everyone in attendance this evening that this meeting is being recorded and live streamed on YouTube. Mobile phones should be switched off, turned off or switched to silent mode. Please ensure that you use a microphone system at all times when addressing the meeting to help everyone hear clearly, both in the room and for any recordings or remote participants, please speak directly into the microphone as clearly and closely as possible. There are currently a limited number of microphones available. If needed, officers will assist by removing microphones around the room. Thank you for your patience and cooperation. I now call upon Father David.
Thanks.
Thank you, Father David. Please be seated, thank you. As we've got some members of the public here, I'm just going to have to read out some information to you. The restroom facilities are available for ladies on this floor and halfway down the main stairwell for gentlemen. In the event of a fire alarm sounding, officers will escort everybody out of the building to the nearest fire safety point in the car park. Members of the public are free to leave the meeting at any time. Please raise your hand if you wish to leave and please be patient whilst a member of security comes to collect you. Thank you. I also forgot to mention part of the introduction. Finally, please everyone be advised that abuse or intimidation of any kind will not be tolerated. Any disturbance will result in the meeting being adjourned. Anyone who is deemed to breach these requirements will be warned and asked to refrain, and if their behaviour persists, they will be required to leave the meeting. Now for the preliminaries. Prelimities. Apologies for absent. Agenda item A, apologies for absent. Are there any apologies, Chief Executive?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Good evening, councillors. We have one apology, which is from councillor Ralph Bright.
Declaration of interests, agenda item B. Does any member wish to declare an interest in respect of any item on the agenda?
Councilwoman Wood.
Councilwoman Woodliffe. I think councillor Noble, can you just, yeah, let's take it outside and... I'd say it again because you don't want to do the repeat of that, do you? Go on, go on. Yes, I think we've heard that, thank you. Right. The minutes. Have I the council's permission to sign the minutes of the council meeting held on the 21st of July 2025? Thank you. Just bear with me while I have a quick, quick sign. Communications, are there communications?
There are none, Mr Mayor.
Declarations and petitions, are there deputations or petitions?
There are none, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Are there questions from elected members? Are there questions from members of the council?
There are, Mr Mayor. This evening we have 14 questions that have been received.
Yes, a lot. And thank you. May I remind members that supplementary questions must arise directly out of the original question or the reply. The first question is from councillor Jonathan Noble to councillor Dale Broughton. Councillor Noble, would you like to ask your question?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. My question is to councillor Broughton. As a local politician who presumably supports openness and transparency in local government affairs, why did you think it appropriate to vote for a secret vote on the proposed allowance increases for Boston Borough councils at January's full council meeting?
Councillor Broughton, would you like to respond?
I thank councillor Noble for his question. This decision doesn't pertain to my role as leader. The full council considered this matter in a public meeting and voted via a paper ballot, which is a permitted form of voting within the council's constitution.
Councillor Noble, would you like a supplementary question?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think councillor's response was really an exercise in semantics because it talks in his response about a paper ballot. This is in effect a secret vote, and no doubt it was made a secret vote because some councils didn't want their local citizens to know how they voted. Which brings me on to the second part of it, which is, of course, it was all about allowances. Now, there was an independent panel that made certain recommendations as to allowances. I think there was an amendment put forward by councillor Woodliffe, which was accepted. And so as a result of that, we had an allowance increase for ordinary members of 25%. But there may have been more incredible increases in allowances. For example, councillor Broughton, then Deputy Leader of Boston Independents, saw a 49% increase in his allowance to 12,500 plus the basic allowance and similar.
Councillor Noble, what's the question?
The question, well, I'm coming to that, thank you.
Well, I hope so, thank you.
So, and so I'm just asking, given that in Boston, you know, we are a town where there's high rents and there's low wages and there's exorbitant energy costs, how does councillor Broughton justify this massive increase in allowances, given that the inflation rate at the time of the vote was about 3 or 4%? Thank you.
Councillor Broughton, would you like to respond?
Yeah, I'd like to thank councillor Noble for his supplementary. As I stated previously, councillor Noble, this was a council decision, a full council decision. You seem to be assuming it was me who made all these decisions, and it wasn't. Everybody took a vote on it, so therefore I don't see why you're actually trying to say it was me who actually put these increases in. So, that's what I can say, thank you.
With respect to me, I didn't say that. I didn't say that about councillor Broughton.
Would you like to go on to your next question, councillor Noble?
Thank you, yes. This is going to councillor Broughton. Why did it take so long for Boston Borough Council to support East Lindsay District Councils and South Holland District Council's proposal for a Southern Lincolnshire Unitary Council, given that they are our partner councils?
Councillor Broughton, would you like to respond?
Again, thank you councillor Noble for your question. A position was taken in March that the council should consider what proposals were being developed for Greater Lincolnshire before deciding how it wished to position itself. Very quickly after I became leader with Cabinet, we took a decision that the strongest proposal is a Greater Lincolnshire for All, which proposes a Northern and Southern Unitary Council. We are actively engaged with our partners at South Holland District Council and East Lindsay District Council to ensure we have a robust submission to government for the 28th of November.
Please don't speak, you're out of order. Don't speak. Please don't speak, you're out of order. Councillor Noble, would you like to have a supplementary question?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes. Obviously, this is all about devolution, but in fact, it seems to be an accretion of power to a higher authority. You see, we have a current system that seems to work, which is parish councils, borough councils, county councils. Now, all kinds of claims have been made about this new entity when it comes into that it will be better value for money, better value for services. But I question, is it not going to be a democratic deficit for people of Boston? Because at the moment, we have fairly small electoral wards and people can fairly easily access the councils. If this all goes through, we're going to have bigger electoral divisions and it's going to be harder, I think, for people to get information. It talks about decision-making remaining close to local communities.
Can we get to the question, please?
The question is, thank you.
Yeah, well, can we get there? Thank you.
Yes, all right, thank you. Yes. So, councillor Broughton, I beg your pardon. So, do you think that this is, the whole thing is going to be a massive success or do you agree with me? Perhaps there's going to be a democratic deficit for local people in terms of getting their information? Thank you.
Councillor Broughton, would you like to respond?
Thank you councillor Noble. Again, our Greater Lincolnshire for All proposal has been all across the county. We've explained what our proposal is. We've come to the conclusion, rather than going against it, we've got to embrace it and try and get the best for our residents. And again, we've still got another three roadshows to go. Our proposal, I believe, is the best for our residents of the borough, and I will believe that until the government decides which one to choose.
Councillor Noble, would you like to have a supplementary question? I'm sorry, beg your pardon. Sorry, councillor Noble, would you like the third question for you to councillor Gosch? Sorry.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, yes. Right, question for councillor Gosch. Why is there a forecast revenue position overspend of 829,000 for the financial year 2025 to 26?
Councillor Gosch, would you like to respond?
Yeah, thank you councillor Noble for your question. The overspend reported at Q1 for BBC was due to shortfalls in achieving targeted salary efficiencies and lower than expected income from bereavement services. These shortfalls are partially mitigated by savings from senior leadership officer posts, higher than anticipated investment income and additional grant funding. Further, the council has made arrangements to seek improvement in this position through identifying opportunities for further efficiencies and actively engaging with service managers to take this forward. This report is available at the following link, if you want, I can send you, if you don't have already. And you can see in table one of revenue finance report, it's all details are there, which outlines the specific variances along with the appropriate figures. As is usual in Boston, the efficiency target identified as part of the process to balance the budget is set to reduce progressively throughout the financial year. In order to assure that progress continues to be made at official level, a new transformation monitoring process has been created to oversee this journey in 25, 26 and 26, 27. Further progress will be reported through the quarterly financial monitoring process. Thank you.
Councillor Noble, would you like a supplementary question?
Yes, thank you councillor Gosch, it was a very comprehensive answer. You did refer at the beginning of your statement or your response to shortfalls in achieving targeted salary efficiencies and lower than expected income from bereavement services. Now, bereavement services used to be a very good earner for this council. I know it's not a statutory obligation, but we did provide it. So I wonder why there's this sudden decline in bereavement services income, if you could answer that, please? And also why we failed to meet our salary efficiency targets? If you don't know, I'll have a written response later. Thank you. Councillor Gosch.
Councillor Gosch, would you like to respond?
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. Regarding the bereavement services, it's a historically set budget, okay? So I already discussed with the managers, they have to learn from the historical data and they have to come up with the new budget really, which considers the, what the wrong they budget set previously, it should be corrected this time. Regarding the next one you said was the salary efficiencies, every budget manager has to consider the timing of the recruitment. So that needs to be considered, it's just the quarter one, still more three quarters to go. We will get to know how much we can save. It's really an estimation, really, we don't know yet. Thank you.
Right, the fourth question is from councillor Noble to councillor Rylott. Councillor Noble, would you like to ask your question, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, yes. It's councillor Rylott. Given that Boston Borough Council's contribution to global warming is so infinitesimal as to be immeasurable, why does Boston Borough Council have a net zero target of 2040?
Councillor Rylott, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I thank councillor Noble for his question. As a country, the UK government has set legally binding commitment to be net zero by 2050, whilst Boston Borough Council's carbon footprint from its own operations is relatively modest. As a local authority, we are uniquely positioned to lead by example and foster positive relationships within the wider community to educate, guide and implement some of the changes required to reduce carbon emissions across the borough. That sphere of influence is wide-ranging and covers local infrastructure, planning, housing and economic development amongst many other areas. The council takes a balanced and pragmatic approach to identifying opportunities to reduce our carbon emissions in a way that leads to multiple other benefits being realised, including long-term financial savings, improved health and wellbeing and reduced waste. The decision to set Boston Borough Council's net zero target at 2040 was based on science-based targets linked to the carbon budget, which demonstrates that the level of emissions required to keep global temperatures below an increase of 1.5 degrees would be exceeded within the borough by 2042 unless emissions are reduced.
Councillor Noble, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, yes, I do. Well, given that response, it's very clear that this council supports the net, or the cabinet anyway, the running group, support the net zero target. Now, my point is this, we have electricity costs in this country, which are the highest in the Western world. Our costs are a third higher than they are in Germany. Therefore, because of net zero and green energy subsidies, we are paying exorbitant electricity prices. Therefore, we're because of net zero and green energy subsidies, we are paying exorbitant electricity prices. So my question to councillor Rylott, do you think that that is a price worth paying in order to get to a notable net zero target of twenty forty? Thank you.
Councillor Rylott, would you like to respond?
Just recently, the Royal Yacht Association announced they would prefer us not to use the old saying man overboard. We should now say person in the water. By my recollection councillor Noble, the next time you jump ship, it could be third time lucky. I wonder which political party will be top of the polls then? I will respond to the supplementary question in writing.
Uh, is from councillor Noble to councillor Broughton. Councillor Noble, would you like to ask your question?
Thank you, I would, Mr Mayor, yes. Right, question to councillor Broughton. Uh, does Boston Borough Council support the flying of English flags on certain lamp posts in the town, thus allowing local citizens to demonstrate their patriotism?
Councillor Broughton, would you like to respond?
I'd like to thank councillor Noble for his question. As leader of this council, I have and will continue to support the appropriate flying of various national flags to mark, commemorate and celebrate a whole host of local, national and international events, including the flying of the English flag and the Union Jack. What I do not support is any form of graffiti being sprayed or painted on anything or flags being attached to monuments or heritage assets that are not purposely designed to have them attached because of the risk of damage being caused. I also hope that this council does not begin to see any complaints, land with it, about the state of any flags that have been put up recently as a display of patriotism you suggest could fall into as they weather and may begin to degrade.
Councillor Noble, would you have a supplementary question?
I do. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I think councillor Broughton's answer goes beyond his brief because I only asked about flags on lamp posts. I'm not, I wasn't talking about any flags or monuments or anything like that. But the key point is this, some some people apparently have suggested that that this is an example of vandalism and thuggery, having these flags flying from.
Are you asking a question or are you giving a statement? Are you asking a question or are you giving a statement?
Uh, no, I'm going to ask a question.
Can we get to the question? Thank you.
Thank you. So my question to councillor Broughton is this, do you think that the these flags on lamp posts, are they an appropriate form of celebration or not? And if not, is your group seeking to have these flags taken down, given that they're on LCC property? Thank you.
Respond, councillor Broughton?
I responded to the last question, councillor Noble. I will continue to support the appropriate flying of various national flags to mark, commemorate and celebrate a whole host of local, national and international events, just not done on heritage assets which should not be used for putting flags on.
The sixth question is from councillor Richard Austin to councillor Broughton. Councillor Austin, would you like to ask your question, please?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor. The Great Exhibition of Lincolnshire is due to be staged on the twenty second of October twenty twenty five at the Lincolnshire Showground. The purpose of this event is to showcase the best of Lincolnshire, attract investment and celebrate the county's industry and innovation. I understand that stands are by invitation and that they are now at capacity. Please can you tell the council which companies based in this borough have accepted the invitation to exhibit at this prestigious event?
Councillor Broughton, would you like to respond?
Yeah, thank you councillor Austin for your question. As you rightly say, the Great Exhibition of Lincolnshire is planned for the twenty second of October. It is being arranged by the Greater Lincolnshire County Combined Authority. The officers and members from Boston Borough Council and the wider SELCP will be attending the event to meet with those in attendance, including those with an investment interest in the area. The Borough Council is actively promoting the event to local businesses and it is hoped many local businesses will also join the day as delegates. In terms of exhibitors, the Combined Authority invited a number of Boston based businesses to showcase their business at the event. At the time of writing, the Combined Authority was working with those businesses to confirm their attendance. For any business considering attending, we would warmly welcome their involvement and hope to meet them there.
Councillor Austin, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, it is a big disappointment that the event does not give opportunity for the great anniversary of twenty thirty and the foundation of Boston, Massachusetts. It ought to be showcased at this event as it has a big potential to increase the economy of a substantial area of Lincolnshire. Please can you uh ensure that this doesn't happen next year?
Thank you. Would you answer a supplementary question?
Yeah, thank you councillor Austin. I'll make a note of that and pass it on.
The seventh question is is from councillor Dorian to councillor Pierpoint. Would you like to ask your question?
Councillor Pierpoint, would you please provide a list of all mayoral duties which you have attended to between the dates of the twenty first of July twenty twenty five and the twenty fourth of September twenty twenty five?
Between, thank you very much for your question. Between the twenty first of July and twenty fourth of September, I have attended twenty nine mayoral engagements across the borough. A copy of those details will be available to you councillor Dorian to collect at the end of the meeting and anyone who wishes to see a copy. Do you have a supplementary question?
Uh, yes, I do. Yeah, it's just a shame that you you took uh advantage of the nuances of the constitution to uh withhold those duties. However, I will I will segue into another part of the question, which is twenty nine uh mayoral duties was twenty nine occasions where you could have disrespected women very badly. The way you disrespected me on the twenty fifth of September twenty twenty five, when you told me to keep my gob shut, you told me to keep my mouth shut four times and you told me.
That is not the question that you're talking about. You're talking about mayoral duties. Now you're starting to get personal. I'm stopping the question. You're not going to go down that route.
This is factual.
It's not going down that route. Stick to the question or else I'm going to stop you. You're not going to start personal attacking me, so get to the question. What is the supplementary question? Otherwise, you're going to sit down and that's it. I'm not having this to a personal attack from you, okay?
This is a factual account.
I don't want a personal attack from you.
Of something that happened during council business in front of council witnesses. You also said it was debatable that.
Are you asking me about mayoral duties or not?
That I was a woman.
Are you asking me about mayoral duties or not?
So misgendering me.
Right.
During council business means that you cannot be trusted.
Take this as a warning. If you continue to personally attack me, I shall ask you to leave this chamber. We're talking about mayoral duties, not about personal attacks, all right? Do you understand me or not?
I disagree.
Do you understand me or not?
No.
Well, therefore, you don't take this warning as a final warning then. You continue in that vein, I shall ask you to go out of this chamber, leave this chamber. I'm not prepared to put up with your personal attacks, okay? Do you have a supplementary question in relation to my mayoral duties?
Are you going to abuse any women when you're on mayoral duties?
I've never abused any women in mayoral duties and I'd take exception to that remark. Thank you. Sit down. Let me just respond to something else about mayoral duties for your information. I was amazed and overwhelmed by your interest in my mayoral role and duties becoming the mayor of Austin and the admiral of Wash, considering that you have never spoken to me since I took the appointment to ask me how I was getting on, nor shown any interest in whatsoever from.
Are you talking to me now? Are you addressing me?
Yes, I'm addressing you.
Why? That's not part of the agenda.
I'm giving you the supplementary answer that you're looking for.
You, you've already answered that.
The eighth question is from councillor Middleton to councillor Broughton. Councillor Middleton, would you like to ask your question?
Uh, with regard to your portfolio duties relating to the community safety, please provide council with an update on the appointment of the two community safety officers and their duties.
Councillor Broughton, would you like to respond?
Thank you for your question councillor Middleton. Two community safety officers have now been appointed and commenced their duties in August. Their main job purpose is to work mainly within Boston Town Centre for any area within the wider borough to tackle persistent antisocial behaviour, creating safer, more cohesive communities through enforcement, education and increased awareness. The second part, some of their key duties, to carry out uniform patrols as identified by the Safer Communities and Antisocial Behaviour Team in consultation with Lincolnshire Police and other partners, providing a visible and reassuring presence to deter crime and antisocial behaviour. The role includes some evenings during the week and working at the weekend. To offer targeted support to vulnerable members of the community, responding to their needs and referring to other agencies when required. To work with all residents and businesses to promote and encourage community integration and social inclusion, reducing the fear of crime by establishing trust. Be responsible for recording incidents, actions within a PACE notebook and then transfer onto the ASB database system called ESINs. Reporting and investigating activities and allegations of nuisance behaviour, reporting back to residents with the support of the ASB officer with progress and outcomes of investigations. Encourage residents to report antisocial behaviour, crime and signposting them how to do so. To be alert and report back on any incidents of fly tipping, littering, graffiti and acts of vandalism. Ensure compliance within the Public Spaces Protection Order within the Boston Town Centre, issuing fixed penalty notices for any breach of the conditions set out within legislation and reporting back to the ASB officer any matters dealt with that fits in with this recognised incremental approach from the PSPO. To act as a professional witness, prepare evidence and appear in court as required. Work with a wider communities team on community engagement activities and events to build trust, utilizing opportunities to speak to residents, businesses and partners and promote key messages. Work closely with Lincolnshire Police and other partners, including businesses on shop watch and pub watch. As the CSOs have only just commenced their duties, I will be reviewing their work regularly at my portfolio meetings with the Safer Communities Team throughout the next year.
Councillor Middleton, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I do. Uh, very comprehensive answer, thank you. Uh, with regard to the press release which announced the arrival of these community safety officers, local residents could be forgiven for reaching the conclusion that these posts had been funded by Boston Borough Council, when that is not the case. Now, we know that this initiative was entirely developed by councillor Dorian, but given that we've all gotten used to you riding on her coattails, it's not surprising you didn't give her any credit at all. What is unforgivable, though, is the fact that you failed to acknowledge the Boston Town Board because it was they who contributed a hundred thousand pounds to the project following negotiations with the previous leader. It is completely unacceptable that you would treat one of our valued partner organisations with such contempt. Could you find it in your way, please, to apologize to the town board?
Councillor Broughton, would you like to respond?
This has been addressed. This has been addressed to the town board. And once again, um councillor Dorian, was she the only one on the council when all this was done? Obviously not.
Councillor Dorian, don't keep throwing in remarks while people are talking. You're out of order. No, you stop it. It's not your show tonight, so be quiet. Yes. No, you are. Right, we'll move on. The ninth question is from councillor Dorian to councillor Staples. Councillor Dorian, would you like to ask your question?
My question to councillor Staples is that councillor Cresswell will be an extremely hard act to follow. And many people, including me, believe that she was unfairly sacked for honouring her election pledge and refusing to join your new gang. Please provide commentary on the approach you will take to ensure the effective delivery of your portfolio duties.
Councillor Staples, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I thank you councillor Dorian for your question. Under councillor Cresswell's remit, the community's portfolio and services have established some excellent initiatives and I hope to maintain and expand these partnerships and projects. As an example of my new steer, last week we held a successful Autumn Days event within the parish of Boston. I am pleased to report that nearly six hundred people came through the doors of Boston Stump. I hope my experience as mayor and work in the community will help and the great team of staff and fellow councillors in this chamber will support the effective delivery of my duties. Thank you.
Councillor Dorian, do you have a supplementary question?
I do. I was actually keen to discover if you had any sayings or mantras to give us an insight into your approach to your portfolio. You wrote to me earlier this year, and I quote, never trust a Tory or an Austin is my mantra. And I'm curious to know how that translates now that you're in administration with two Austin councillors and you're sitting around the cabinet table with a Tory. Perhaps both the Austins and the Tories should take a very cautious approach in getting involved with you.
I think that's inappropriate, but you can answer it if you want to.
No, I find it totally inappropriate councillor Dorian and I will not answer that publicly, but I'll give you a written answer.
Well done. Have a seat. Thank you. All right, the tenth question is from councillor Cresswell to councillor Broughton. Councillor Cresswell, would you like to ask your question?
Oh, well, thank you very much. Um, councillor Broughton, I'm sure that several weeks into your new role, you will have met with the chief executive of P S P S on a one to one basis. If so, what assurances did you give him in relation to his claim that he failed to retain staff in part due to the conduct of elected members? If you haven't met him yet, please explain why not and please still comment on how you intend to reassure him with regard to staff retention issues.
Councillor Broughton, would you like to respond to that?
Yes, I'd like to thank councillor Cresswell for a question. Yes, I've already met with the P S P S chief executive. It's my intention to look forwards and work constructively with P S P S as a significant delivery partner. It is for the P S P S board of directors to oversee and scrutinize staff turnover within the company. And I have now appointed two councillors as directors who will be responsible for that on our behalf.
Councillor Cresswell, do you have a supplementary question?
I do, thank you. Um, I'm sure that you will agree that proper oversight of P S P S and the board of directors is extremely important. To add to what councillor Noble raised earlier about the point to council to yourself about L G R, as a cabinet, I think you will agree, we did not feel we could work with East Lindsay or South Holland while they removed some of our class rights on P S P S and that was part of our bargaining chip before we actually agreed. Um, regarding staffing issues as well as many other issues, the board of directors of P S P S is really important. Claire Rylott, councillor Rylott, sorry, raised a legal matter.
What's your question?
I'm getting to it.
Well.
Um, as a legal matter at the last meeting of full council and claimed that neither you nor the rest of the cabinet were aware of the costs incurred when you know and the rest of the cabinet who were the last administration, no, that's not true. Councillor Dorian kept all of cabinet fully brief. She gave us multiple packs of information um to do with P S P S and sought support and guidance from us on at least three cabinet meetings. I would like to know. I would like to know who gave you authority or why you discussed a confidential legal matter with the opposition instead of going through the deputy monitor.
Point of order, Mr Mayor, that information did not come from any of the cabinet members, it came from an outside source.
Thank you very much. Councillor Broad, do you like to respond?
I can't catch all your questions, councillor Cresswell, but I'm happy to give you a written response.
The eleventh question is from councillor Dorian to councillor Butler. Councillor Dorian, would you like to ask you a question?
Please comment on the importance of elected members providing factually correct and truthful information in line with the Nolan principles when discussing council business with the press, other elected members or members of.
One question there, you asked one question. Is please provide council with a brief update of your portfolio work.
Sorry, which number is it?
Number eleven. Question number eleven.
Have you got it now? That's what I've got, it's number eleven.
It's a question to councillor Butler. Eleventh question.
Oh, to councillor Butler?
Councillor Butler.
Oh, you're not cheering her on. Please provide council with a brief update of your portfolio work with specific reference to current staffing arrangements.
Councillor Butler, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and also thank you to councillor Dorian for notice of your question. My portfolio holder work is described in our annual delivery plan. It is a very busy year as we plan for the food waste collections next year. We employ our staff directly, supported by agency workers and operate under a management structure operated within our partnership arrangement. Thank you.
Councillor Dorian, do you want to ask a supplementary question?
Yes, I would. With regard to staffing, the introduction recently of the EDI policy at Cabinet was very important because this policy allows us to attract and retain diverse talent and helps to create a workforce that's better equipped to understand, engage and respond to the complex challenges of our residents. It allows staff, actually, to have equality such as equal pay, maternity leave, holiday pay or being appointed on merit and just not because you're part of a jolly boys' club. The EDI policy allows us to ensure that voices in the needs of all residents are recognised and valued and in turn leads to policies and initiatives that genuinely reflect the communities they serve. A good example, actually, in your portfolio councillor Butler, would be the application of our back door bin service. For example, recently one resident suffered the indignity of this service being withdrawn simply because operatives didn't fully understand issues around disability. So I'd like to ask you why you voted against the introduction of the EDI policy at Cabinet, especially given the fact that you hadn't bothered to offer any contribution to the debate beforehand.
Councillor Butler, do you like to respond?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you councillor Dorian for your supplementary. I voted against the EDI policy solely because I do not agree with employing another officer, another member of staff to do something that we should be doing anyway. Thank you.
The twelfth question is from councillor Dorian to councillor Broadton. Would you like to ask your question?
Please comment on the importance of elected members providing factually correct and truthful information in line with the Nolan principles when discussing council business with the press, other elected members or members of the public.
Would you like to respond, councillor Broadton?
I'd like to thank councillor Dorian for a question. I would agree this is important and it's something we should positively support each other in to learn and become the best councillor we can going forward, which is what the majority of councillors voted in wish to do.
Councillor Dorian, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, I do, because sometimes the majority of elected members don't want to do what you just said. And there is an egregious incident that I'm aware of and I'm sure you're aware of when councillor Gilbert gave a direct quote to the target on the 30th of July 2025, stating that, and I quote, 'And Dorian engineered a vote against me because she claimed that I made racist comments because I discuss Islam as an ideology', close quote. Your councillor Broadton know that is factually incorrect and nothing could be further from the truth. When that issue arose, you also know for a fact that rather than lead anyone to a conclusion, I emphasised the fact that all of you had to make your own choice without being led by anyone at all. Is this willingness to allow your group to feed false information to the public the best that we can expect now?
Would you respond?
Thank you councillor Dorian, I'm more than happy to give you a written response.
The thirteenth question is from councillor Dorian to councillor Sharp. Councillor Dorian, would you like to ask your question?
Actually, the response from councillor Sharp was wholly inadequate, no surprise there, so I will withdraw the question.
Right, we go on to the next question then. The fourteenth question is from councillor Dorian to councillor Broadton. Would you like to ask your question?
One of the most important Nolan principles, in my view, is integrity, which can be defined as acting with honesty and according to strong, consistent moral. Sorry, Mr Mayor, what's you laughing at?
I'm not laughing anything.
You were laughing, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor.
Just carry on with your question.
No, 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 you can't say you weren't laughing when you were laughing and it will be on the tape you were laughing. So if you don't want to tell me why you were laughing, say that, but don't say you weren't laughing.
Carry on with your question.
One of the most important Nolan principles is integrity, which can be defined as acting with honesty and according to strong, consistent, moral and ethical principles, even when no one is watching. Do you fully understand this meaning and if so, give an example of a time that you acted in this vein?
Would you respond to that question?
Thank you councillor Dorian for your question. It would be misguided to claim a full understanding of matters which are often subject to personal judgements. It's perhaps not about giving an example, more about endeavouring to achieve these principles each day and learn from where they challenge us.
Would you like to ask a supplementary question, councillor Dorian?
Yes, shame you didn't quite understand the question, but not surprising. I have a different view of your approach when it comes to the case of no one is watching. During a recent Borough Council election campaign, you made two huge mistakes when you didn't proofread leaflets properly and we had to have them reprinted. There was going to be a huge cost and I told you we'd have to tell the group and be honest with them. I was really shocked when you responded in writing, 'We should keep the leaflets quiet. No one is questioning it, just let it be swallowed up'.
It's not a council matter. This is not a council matter.
Because of error, but not whose error.
It's not a council matter. You're going off the subject of an election. No, it's not a council matter. Sorry.
It worries me enormously that you are prepared to take other people's money.
Not a question.
And not tell them the truth.
Councillor Dorian, it's not a question. Can you sit down, please? It's not a question. It's not a question.
The question is here. You let councillor Noble preamble. Are you treating me differently because I'm a woman?
Don't be like that.
But I am a woman. Don't misgender me. You did let her preamble.
I'm going to give you a last warning. If you continue in this vein, you're going to leave this chamber. Do you understand me?
No, I'm not.
Right, if you don't understand me, I'll ask you to leave the chamber. Can you ask the security to come in and ask councillor Dorian to leave the chamber, please?
Can we have a ruling from the monitor? Yeah, you can't do it. If you'd gone to your course, you would have known you can't do that. Security, for God's sake. Like Dale Broadton being frightened of me. That's what Helen tells the public. Dale's frightened of me. You can't hit me, love. You won't hit me, love. No.
I'll ask councillor, sorry, I'll ask John Nelson-Meller to read out the constitution.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to set out the constitution in relation to the request. If a member persistently disregards the ruling of the mayor by behaving improperly or offensively or deliberately obstructs business, the mayor may move that the member be not heard further. If seconded, the motion will be voted on without discussion.
I'm proposing we don't hear any more from councillor Dorian. Could I have a second, please? Councillor Azad, thank you. All in favour? Thank you. So councillor Dorian will remain quiet for the rest of the council chamber meeting. Thank you. On that particular matter, should I say? Are there any questions for the members of the public?
There are none, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. We'll now move on to part two of the agenda items. Part two. Audit and Governance Committee meeting minutes. We will now move to the agenda items on the evening, the first being the Audit and Governance Committee meeting from the meeting held on the 7th of July, which starts on page 11 of the agenda. The draft minutes are for council to note only. Does anyone wish to speak on the draft minutes? The items for noting, we'll move on to the next item. Thank you. The Outturn Report. The second item tonight's agenda is the 2024/25 Outturn Report, which starts on page 13 of the agenda pack. Can I ask councillor Goish to introduce the report? Thank you.
Good evening and thank you, Mr Mayor. As the annual budget presentation, last time I outlined the strong financial progress we have made. In 2023, I already mentioned that, just a quick recap, there was a £282,000 budget gap with no efficiency plan and in 2024, I inherited a £664,000 of gap. Yet we have since repaid a huge amount of previous debt. Direct rates now base budgets on historical data, cutting mid-year adjustments like performative fees and avoiding unexpected pressures. I would like to provide you with an update on our full year financial performance for 2025. Cabinet reviewed the 2025 Q4 Outturn Report on 31st of July 25 and I now present the report for recommendation to transfer the surplus to the Volatility Reserve. As of 31st of March, the revenue surplus position was £1.015 million, to be specific, an improvement from the Q3 forecast of £627,000. This enhanced performance is primarily driven by two factors. The disciplined underspend in the service direct rates and the overperformance of our investment income. On the investment front, while our net budget for investment income was set at £1.587 million, we achieved a favourable variance of £658,000. In the service direct rates, we recorded a net underspend of £746,000. Most of our direct rates have achieved these savings through rigorous cost control measures, primarily by reducing IT, staffing and operational expenses, as well as differing certain projects. However, it is important to note that the governance and monitoring and general fund assets direct rates experienced overspends due to many reasons. This overall fiscal discipline underscores the robust financial management in place and provides significant scope for reallocating resources to strategic initiatives. So the recommendation is taking this into consideration. It is recommended that full council approve the transfer of £1.015 million surplus to the Volatility Reserve. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Goish. Is there a second, please? Would you like to, yeah, councillor Evans, would you like to reserve your right to speak? Okay. Are there any speakers on this item? Councillor Goish, at a proposal of the recommendation, we'd like to sum up, please. Thank you. Are we all in favour? Thank you. Any against? Thank you. Carried. Thank you very much. Right, the third item on tonight's agenda is the Democratic Arrangement Appointments to Committee Vice Chairman and to Outside Bodies 25/26, which starts on page 47 of the agenda pack. Can I ask the managing office to introduce the report? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Good evening, members. Nominations for the vacancies detailed within the report have been received and these are tabled on your desks in front of you. For clarity, I will just go through the nominations received. They are as follows. For the Audit and Governance Committee Vice Chairmanship position, there's a nomination for councillor Cantwell. For the Vice Chairmanship position on the Licensing/Regulatory and Appeals Committee, there's a nomination for councillor Evans. Turning to the outside body appointments on the Black Slus and Internal Drainage Board, we've received nominations for the two vacancies from councillor Richard Austin and councillor Welbury. On the Wash and North Norfolk Partnership Members Group, we've received a nomination for councillor Bedford for the vacancy. And then for the John Lawton Educational Foundation, which is a five-year appointment, we've received a nomination for councillor Gilbert for that one vacancy. Chairman, sorry, Mr Mayor, I look for a proposal to move those nominations. Thank you.
Broadton?
I'm happy to move these on block, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please? Councillor Scoot, thank you.
Mr Mayor, I want to make another proposal for the Audit and Governance Vice Chair.
Is that possible? Yes, fire away then.
I'd like to nominate councillor Emma Cresswell as Vice Chair of Audit and Government and the reason for that is that we are the official opposition and it's good governance to have, oh, you know this because I did teach you that bit, it's good governance to have your main opposition in the scrutiny roles on council. So for that reason, I think it's entirely appropriate that councillor Emma Cresswell becomes the Vice Chair of Audit and Governance and I'd look for a second.
Thank you very much, councillor Middleton.
Thank you councillor Dorian. I don't believe that councillor Cresswell is a member of the Audit and Governance Committee as it stands.
No, you're right, we'd put her on there. We'd swap.
Do you receive notification? Can I just confirm councillor Dorian, have you given notification to the proper officer of that change? No, unfortunately then, at the moment, the membership is, I believe yourself, on the Audit and Governance Committee as a member of your group.
Could you give us a ruling then, monitor officer, please? Could the proper officer do it under emergency powers if Emma was to be voted in as vice chair?
The position at the moment is the vice chairman comes from the. The, the position at the moment is the vice chairman comes from the, from the membership of the committee. And obviously, the, the member that you're pointing forward is not a member of that committee at the moment. So we don't have a, an item at the moment to change membership of, of that committee. So I don't think at this point in time, that's a nomination that the council could, could vote on. Thank you.
Yes, councillor Creswell.
Yeah, can I make a nomination to nominate councillor Dorian as the vice chair?
Second for that? That's Middleton. Are there any speakers at all on the, on the, on the subject?
Okay, just for the members' clarity on this, we've had an amendment that councillor Dorian be appointed as the Vice Chairman of the Audit and Governance Committee. So you're voting, you'll go to a vote now to all in favour of that amendment, or you take a vote on that particular amendment? Thank you.
So all in favour of that amendment? Against? Amendment is failed. Go back to the original motion then to elect councillor Cantwell as the Vice Chair of Audit and Governance. Is everybody in favour? And all the other appointments as well, councillor Evans as well. All in favour? Motion carried. Thank you.
I'd like to vote against and have my vote recorded. We normally do that in the chamber. Vote for against and abstain.
I'll just go back to those against then. Recorded? Thank you. Um, yes, okay, you, you want to abstain. You have to abstain, understand? Thank you. We'll make a note of that. Thank you. So councillor Cantwell, Vice Chair of Audit and Governance, councillor Evans, Vice Chair of Licensing. The fourth item on tonight's agenda is the Designation of Officer Section One Five One on page fifty seven. Can I ask councillor Broughton to introduce the report? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council will be aware that the partnership has an interim Director of Finance and Section One Five One Officer in Brendan Arnold. Brendan has done an excellent job for the councils, but will shortly be moving on to his next assignment. Following the recruitment process earlier this year, which this council was part of via the Joint Chief Officer Employment Panel, Mr. Russell Stone was appointed Director of Finance. Russell takes up his post in early November. This report is required for council to formally designate Russell as Section One Five One Officer in his new role. The same role is going to all three partnership councils over the coming days. I would just like to put on record to take this opportunity to thank Brendan formally for all he has done to support this council while fulfilling this role and wish him ever success in the future. I recommend to council that Russell Stone, the council's incoming Director of Finance, is designated as a council's Section One Five One Officer with effect from the third of November two thousand and twenty five.
Okay, councillor Broughton, is there a second? Would you like to reserve your right to speak? Second, councillor Gilbert. Are there any speakers on the item? Councillor Noble.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, these points maybe have to be answered later, but I'd just like to ask them. We know that according to point two one, that there's an, an agency called Gatton Beas Sanderson was involved in carrying out a search for a financial officer. So it'd just be interesting to know what was the cost of that agency's services. On point two, point six, it mentions that he was a chief financial officer fifty years, but it doesn't say where, which council. That would be interesting to know where he was a, an officer there for fifteen years. And lastly, which I think probably can be asked, answered, point three, point two, South Holland was consulted as the Chief Officer Employment Panel, as was the Joint Chief Officer Employment Panel, but ELDC does not, have seemed to have been consulted. Why not, given that they're one of our partner councils? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Noble. Are there any more speakers on the, on the matter? No, councillor Broughton, you'd like to sum up?
Yeah. Thank you, councillor Noble. The first two points, I'll have to get you rid of responses to that, but the last point, East Lincolnshire District Council was on the employment panel on the day.
Thank you, councillor Broughton. We'll now move to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Any abstentions? And a motion carried. Thank you. The fifth item on tonight's agenda is the South and East Lincolnshire Partnership, Council's Partnership Performance Report, which starts on page sixty three. And can I ask councillor Broughton to introduce the report? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The partnership performance report comes forward every six months to appraise council on the activities being undertook through the partnership across the three councils. This report is going to our parent partner councils at their next meetings. The report shows that out of the hundred and two activities in the alignment and delivery plan for this year, eighty two percent are already complete or on plan. External funding currently is at nine million thirty two thousand six hundred and twelve for the first quarter of twenty five twenty six, and the partnership is on track to achieve the efficiency savings up to thirty nine million one hundred and seventy four thousand one hundred and sixty one by two thousand and thirty two. Work has already started on the draft plan for twenty six twenty seven. The partnership continues to make significant progress in the delivery of key initiatives, as well as attracting external investment and delivering service savings. The collaboration between the three councils continues to enable us as a council to punch above our weight regionally and nationally. I therefore recommend that council note the content of this report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a second please? Councillor Gosch, would you like to reserve the right to speak?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll reserve the right to speak, yeah.
Thank you. Are there speakers on this item? Right, councillor Gosch, you wish to speak? Did you say you wish to speak or not? Sorry. No, you didn't. Right, thank you. We'll now move to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Any abstentions? Motion carried. Thank you. Move to part three of the agenda, and we have one motion on notice. Can I ask councillor Staples to introduce and move the motion? Thank you.
Under the previous administration, councillor David Middleton was appointed as Chairman of Planning of Boston Borough Council on Monday, the nineteenth of May, twenty twenty five. It is proposed that he is replaced by councillor Peter Bedford. Councillor Bedford has had eight years' experience as Chairman of Planning Committee, as well as seven years as portfolio holder of planning and development, after first being elected as Coastal Ward councillor in nineteen ninety one. He has experience of steering through complex planning applications whilst maintaining both the integrity of the Boston Borough Council planning process, as well as retaining the public confidence in this council. We therefore move that the council resolves to remove councillor David Middleton as Chairman of the Planning Committee of Boston Borough Council, and appoint councillor Peter Bedford as the new Chairman of Planning Committee with immediate effect. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Can we have a second please? Councillor Sharp. Would you like to second the motion and reserve the right to speak?
Please, thank you.
Are there any speakers on this item? Councillor Austin.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very pleased to be able to support this. Not only have we got the record of all that, sorry, excuse me, councillor Bedford has done in, in planning, what isn't included, in fact, was that for the majority of the time when the South East Lincolnshire local plan was being written and developed, he was co-chairman, alternating with one from South Holland. And this was done admirably, admirably, sorry. So yes, I'm very happy to support Peter Bedford. Councillor Bedford, thank you.
Councillor Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to say, I'm quite disappointed. I've worked hard in the two years I've been in the position. I've improved decision making on the committing. I've arranged for a lot of training for members of the committee. I think the relationship between officers and trainers and members of the committee, we've all got to know each other. Our response and performance on getting applications turned around is good. We make good choices, good decisions. We're well under the two percent of getting it wrong, which is the national average. So having done all that and some training for myself at Warwick University, I'm quite disappointed to be cited for doing all that. And Peter Bedford, I know, has done quite a lot, but this year, or last year, what to do remembering for was giving misinformation and accusing councillor Broughton of hitting an applicant and therefore should not sit on it. How that can be the case, he can have only taken that out of councillor Staples' book of giving misinformation. So I am very disappointed. I hope the planning goes well, because it, the, the borough needs more houses. We have to get away from the emotional aspects and adhere to legislation. That's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on the, on the matter? Councillor Danny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I steal this microphone from you? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All I would like to say, I'm very pleased that we can see there is a change. I'm not against anyone. I will support anyone for the right decisions and the right strategy and plans for this town. However, we've seen there is a mix now in the cabinet. We've seen people, you know, rotated on post, and I think that's very healthy. We should embrace it because it will bring different experience. As I said, we should all get our opportunities and our, you know, probably time to probably prove to people that we can do things and we can do it differently, because everybody contribute by his work to what we do. And I thank councillor Middleton for being for two years there. And we can welcome councillor Bedford with his experience. I think we should be pleased that we are now a sort of a rainbow cabinet and council, and we should work all together in a good manner, and we should work together in peace to deliver something for Boston. That's what I can say.
Thank you very much. Can I ask councillor Dorian?
Yeah, I'd like to know why we're doing this. The motion on notice is here, this scroll, this handwritten scroll, that was no doubt schlepped around the Battle of Britain memorial service last week for you all to sign it. You're an absolute disgrace. We're doing this simply because you're being spiteful, for one, and you're paying your debts, for two, because he was right behind you with the Facebook trolls. Dale Broughton was number one, Pete Bedford was number two, on the Facebook trolling me mercilessly. You added to it and you made my life a misery. And now the only reason you're targeting councillor Middleton is because he's married to me. You did your dodgy deals. You gave out all your committee assignments.
I think we need to get to the point rather than being
Up to five minutes.
You're a person attacking again. You're a person attacking again. Cut the attacking out. You are. You keep personally attacking people. No, you stop it. Stop firstly attacking to people. It's not dodgy at all. So don't be, give comments like that in this meeting.
I said it was a dodgy deal. I didn't call him dodgy Dale the way Facebook is.
Get on with your question. Get on with your speaking and get to the point and cut out all the unnecessary pleasantness.
It's spiteful and nasty. And now he's been a great chair. You've all came to me and said what a wonderful chair he is. Councillor Baxter, what's so lyrical about my husband? I thought you fancied him. I thought you were after him because he was such a wonderful chair, you couldn't get enough of him. Time and time again, I thought I had genuine confidence.
Those comments are not necessary in this council meeting.
Stop interrupting.
No, you stop being personal and get to the point. You're making it too personal. You're attacking people. We're not having it. You're not having a one man show here. Let's get to the point. Stop attacking people.
Have you stopped the clock, Paul? Have you re, have you got my time again, please? So that's what you're doing. You're fulfilling the obligations you all made to each other and to this crew behind me. And your point would only be valid, councillor Danny, if they were sharing out the spoils and giving the opportunity to be Chair of Planning to someone who hasn't been Chair of Planning. But they haven't done that. They've gone backwards. And what councillor Middleton said was true, that councillor Bedford accused Dale Broughton of knocking an applicant unconscious, a planning applicant unconscious, and told the officers that Dale Broughton couldn't sit on that planning committee. In the end, it turned out Peter Bedford didn't sit on the planning committee, so we didn't know who was telling the truth or who had done what. There's been a whole heap of mess go on behind the scenes, and you've all got yourselves involved in it. And you've all been tainted by that man there and that man there. And God help the lot of you.
Take the Lord's name in vain when you're talking in this chamber, if you don't mind.
I didn't take the Lord's name in vain. I said God helped a lot of you. I mean that genuinely. Somebody needs to help them.
You need some help, I think.
Now who's been personal?
Well, yeah, it's, I'm giving you some of your medicine back now. Now be quiet. Now be quiet. You've had enough today. Councillor Creswell.
You're a dreadful mayor and you're a dreadful chairman.
And you're a dreadful council leader, or previous one.
I'd just like to point out a couple of things that have been discussed and points that have been raised tonight. Something that councillor Noble alluded to, something that councillor Danny has alluded to, it's deeply concerning for me that councillors in this chamber were offered a financial incentive to join the new ruling party. Decisions of political alignment should be grounded in principle, policy and public interest, not personal financial gain. The integrity of our democratic institution depends on transparency and accountability. When financial inducements are used to influence political allegiance, it undermines public trust and damages the credibility of this counter, this council. We must ensure that any changes in group membership are made for the right reasons and not as a means to retain or enhance personal allowance, as I know for a fact happened in this chamber.
Can we keep to the topic of the motion rather than going off the rails into something different? Councillor Isard.
Thank you. Don't make many speeches. I don't feel there's a need to. The reason why I feel that there's a need to be a change as Chair of Planning is I was quietly embarrassed by the way the Chair done the last two planning meetings. His attitude to the residents that had given up their time to come to the meeting was appalling. He spoke down at them. He didn't even understand that they couldn't hear at the back. What was the point? All he did was be disrespectful to the members of the public that were there because it was an important issue for them. It might not be an important issue for the Chair, but it was for the residents, and I was embarrassed by the way he treated them. And that's my, the reason for this change.
Are there any more speakers before we move on? Right, councillor Staples, would you like to sum up? Sorry, councillor Bedford, apologies. Sorry, councillor Bedford, apologies.
Mr Mayor, I wasn't going to speak tonight, as I really didn't think I had a need to. But the thing that was brought up about councillor Broughton and myself was reported to me as from a member of the public. Now, if you are on a planning committee and a member of the public brings anything like that to you, you take it to the committee clerk or the monitoring officer, which is the exact route that I did. And then that was the end of it. And that is the correct way, Mr Mayor, and if people are on planning long enough, they will learn certain things about that and it only comes with experience. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Bedford. Councillor Dorian, you'd be quiet, please. Councillor Staples, would you like to sum up? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I don't think any of us take any pleasure in removing you councillor Middleton as Chair of Planning. But I think, given what happened in May and the embarrassment which councillor Isard adequately referred to, with the residents of Fishtough still continues. And, and this is why I am proposing this tonight, because I, I've known councillor Bedford now longer than I care to say, and I know that he acts with integrity and I know that he knows planning absolutely inside out. And I feel that this council deserves a Chair of Planning that will act in the appropriate way, treat the speakers appropriately. And this is why I've moved this motion on notice tonight. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, we now move to the vote, all those in favour, please raise your hand. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Motion carried. That concludes the formal business of the meeting, I thank you all for attendance and have a safe journey home, thank you.